Welcome, the audience. Viewers may watch live Board Committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set a time this time for public comment. Kelly, it looks like we do not have any public comments? Okay, great. Well, then, we will move on to procedural items. First up are our draft committee meeting minutes from April 1st. Are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes?
I just had one question, and that is, it's gonna be on page, the last page. And it's where it says, "The chairman suggested the board keep this information in line for strategic plan work." And I was thinking that actually all of us were thinking that as well.
So the committee versus board?
So that it's the committee chair, but it's the board in support.
Committee.
The committee in support of the chair.
Yeah.
Something along that line.
Okay.
So that it just says, yeah, we're all kinda thinking that that was important.
I think probably the notes just reflected who said it versus, but you're saying like, everybody supports that?
Yeah.
The committee supports.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. So with that amendment, we can ask that the minutes be revised, as suggested, and we can move on, sort of, to the TCAPS District Course Catalog updates. But since there are none, I think we can move on to, and actually, I wanted to ask procedurally, do we even need to add that to the consent calendar, the consent agenda? Because it's a standing agenda item, but when there are no updates, I don't even know.
The only reason we do it is a little bit, just always a reminder, because if we ever mess up, then it, we could get in people accounting trouble.
Okay.
So the district lost a million dollars before I got here in an issue with not having updated course catalog. And so, since I've been here, we've just done it. That way, the board always affirms, everybody asks the question, and it's always there from that standpoint.
As a matter of record, as opposed to looking like it's an oversight.
It is. Because every time we do it, we don't just approve that actual class, we actually reapprove the entire course catalog. And that, from a people accounting standpoint, I never have to worry that, because you have to prove that the board approved the course catalog whenever there's a change. So, that's why. So, you don't have to, but that's my rationale.
That sounds good. We'll move the TCAPS District Course Catalog, 2024 to 2025, to the consent agenda. With no changes. Right. Okay. Next up is the date change proposal for the August 26th Board Curriculum Committee meeting, and I'm gonna defer to Ms. Houghton and Mr. Tiesworth on that.
Yeah, we were just thinking that it landed also this year that usually Board curriculum lands the week that teachers are back. And that Tuesday in particular this year is gonna be staff meetings in buildings. And Jesse and I like to be out at those buildings if possible. It's just a big day, first day teachers are back on that Tuesday. So backing it up a week would be, would be nice for us.
Could we even move it forward to the 2nd of September?
That's cutting it close to the full Board meeting.
Our issue is that we don't have items for the packet.
In time, yeah, in time for the board to review before the full Board meeting.
You could switch it to a different day right there if you wanted. I mean, there's lots of options, but ahead does squeeze us. Not impossible, but it does squeeze us.
Like even the 20th or the, I mean, the week of the 18th, I don't know what you got, but.
Like Monday, the 18th would be fine. Just that Tuesday cabinet, all of us, Dr. Van Wagner.
Or, or we could go Monday.
Monday, the 25th. So the teachers are back for their professional development, right, on, starting Tuesday? Yes. Yeah.
And then the 25th in the evening, we have a study session. Right?
Yeah.
But could do it before?
Okay. I'm fine with anything. How about, how about your calendar? I mean.
Well, not necessarily. Our new proposed date for the study session, that was the, is the, that was the strategic plan one that we had as a third. So we really have to talk about that one. The board may choose to keep that, but.
Okay.
I just wouldn't wanna say guarantee.
But that doesn't, curriculum timing doesn't interfere with the study session and vice versa, so, okay. What would be preferable for you all, knowing you have to prepare for Professional Development Week? Would you like to have it the week of eight, the 18th, or Monday, the 25th?
That Monday's good with me. The 25th would work.
Yeah, that's fine. How about you, Beth?
Yeah.
So we'll just move it back a day, then, to Monday, the 25th? And do we wanna make it 8:30 a.m.?
I'm just doing 8:15.
I think we talked last time about changing our.
That's something you gotta discuss.
Committee meetings going forward.
Yeah.
To 8:30 a.m.
Because we were, started at 8:30, and then we moved to 8:15.
Right.
Because Holly's schedule.
Okay. So we'll do Monday, it sounds like Monday, August 25th, at 8:30 a.m.
While we're on that note, do we want to move, at least as of right now, to 8:30 for moving forward?
Yeah.
Well.
That was, I couldn't remember if we talked about that a month ago.
We did not, so.
But yeah, I think that would probably work better. I know in the winter, it's dodgy getting here.
Knowing that you'll have a new member who may have to revisit, but as of right now, we'll plan on next month being at 8:30, and then continuing unless something changes.
Yeah, is that okay with everybody else in the administration, too? Okay.
Time to grab a cup of coffee.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Then we'll move on to the field trip requests for the German exchange program.
Sure, I am actually gonna highlight this later on at the end, but this is an exchange program we've been having going on with our German teacher, Carrie Lavante, who's over at West Senior High. So this is a field trip request for next summer. So she did, Carrie travels extensively, has a lot of connections over in Germany, has taken students for quite a few years over there, and it's been a pretty cool experience for those, so.
Yeah. I'm very supportive of the program. I think she runs it every two years, every other year. And for, for students who have completed German III, I believe it's a fairly advanced level. The only thing that caught my eye was, it looks like they're asking for permission for up to 15 students, but then in the cost estimate, it had only 13. So she had like the total cost estimate divided by 13, and then it came out to nearly 4,000. But if, obviously, you bump that up to 15, if you divide by 15, it's gonna be slightly lower. And right now, the cost is 4,300 estimated. So I was curious about, you know, that difference. Does anybody know why?
I think she was just sort of being, a lot of our advisors would rather tell families, this is the ceiling of what the trip will cost. If we get more kids, then the cost will go down. I believe that's what she was thinking with that.
Okay. And, and the other thing is, do we have a scholarship fund for kids whose families might not be able to raise that kind of amount?
We don't. TCAPS does not. That doesn't mean we don't have connections with other area organizations that might look to scholarship a student. We also work with families to do payment plans on that. And we do have a lot of our advisors who do international trips that are this costly, will work on fundraising opportunities to like help them organize some type of a fundraising. The nice thing is when, part of the reason why they plan these over a year in advance is to help families sort of put, like, spread that cost out and help kids, you know, who might be working towards part of that as well. But we do not. TCAPS does not own a scholarship fund.
Well, you know, this is something we are talking about. We are talking about, you know, the Washington DC trip. You know, there's kids that get to go and don't, and there's a real equity issue with that. And, you know, it, it is, I've talked with all of you about trying to look at that philanthropic arm of our organization, that, like, is this something, like, for some of these, maybe not all, but at least some? Like, the Washington DC trip is one that a lot of schools, you know, are able to fund and do for every kid. I think, you know, I think as we continue to look at our resources and the inequities that we have as a district compared to others, that we just, you know, like, like we, like, you know, with athletics, for instance, we have a large pay, you know, pay to participate that our area districts don't.
Yeah.
You know, and like, like, across the board, there's those kind of things. And so, I think the SSN does a good job picking up where they can. But I think that really starting to maybe identify some of these and some goals and a way for us to have a scholarship fund or something like that. But how do we fund that? Like, it is something in the future for us, I think, to talk about.
Yeah. I mean, with LEAP, we have the full price, and then the discounted rate, and then, you know, for those who qualify for reduced lunch. And then we have the even, I think, even further reduced rate for free, people who qualify for free.
But SSN's covering that.
Yeah.
You know, so that's less for other things, you know? And, and, like I said, and so I think it's, it's just having a very intentional conversation, intentional structure, those kind of things for these kind of things moving forward, that I think collectively as a cabinet, we're, we're discussing and think that there's some inequities there that we, we need to try and look at some structure and find a way.
And I, I do wonder, like, with Rotary charities, being so involved in international exchange programs, if they might help?
They, they, they don't do a lot, unfortunately. They kinda really are very structured in their funding and, like, seating and, and, you know, like, systems change. Not really, they don't really give that way, unfortunately. But there are others.
Community Foundation.
And like I said, there may be, you know, people in the philanthropic world, but they don't know. You know, I think that that's conversations I've had with, you know, continue to have with all of you is, is if they don't know, they don't give. And so I think we've got some work to do in really identifying some of these pillars, and I think this is one of them.
Definitely the Grand Jarvis Regional Community Foundation. I know they're a great partner to TCAPS, so.
I think it's a good conversation for them.
But does, just to that point, does the community foundation give directly to TCAPS?
It depends on what it is. You know, we have, we have a few things, but not a lot, like.
I think that's worth exploring. I think there's opportunities, and I think there's, there's a shift in, in the culture of supporting directly to schools versus supporting organizations that support our kids.
Sure.
So I, you know, I've talked about this with you a long time, and I'm excited, especially if it helps to support those kids further from opportunity. I'm, I think we're ready for it, and I think we have a powerful story to tell.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think, probably goes without saying, we're all in support of this program moving forward to the consent calendar, but you have to go through Finance Committee as well, so. All right, then, moving on to informational items. We've got the Board Curriculum Learning Series, and focusing on student assessments this month. Everyone's favorite topic, student assessments.
I want to annoy them.
I'll text her quick.
No, we thought we'd sort of break a little bit of this down for you guys before we show you. We do have a proposal for what we're recommending for our student assessments for this next school year, a little bit of a change. But I thought we'd start with, what does the Michigan Department of Education require for us to do? List is really long here, but keep in mind that not every kid does all of these on this list, right? So like the PSAT, SAT is just, that's a grade specific one there. Our My Access one, that is specifically for students who are not on the diploma track. They're on a sort of completion track that aligns with their goals and their IEPs there. Our WEDA is for our EL students. That is a requirement that we have to give that. So these are all required assessments. That top one is that literacy and math assessment, that we, we have a list that we're allowed to choose different programs, that we can do that. That has to be to monitor the learning through our students. You guys are familiar with MSEP and PSAT. Any questions about this slide? I don't think these are any surprises for you guys. Okay. Great. And then Dan's gonna talk a little bit about, okay, so what does best practice recommend, right? I like to start there, too, so.
Yeah. So four things we look at, the idea of a balance system. So the idea of the formative, summative assessments and the interim assessments. You know, that summative assessment is what we look like with MSEP, and we talk about NWA or AIMS Web. Those are more of the formative and interim assessments that can inform instruction. Well, that summative assessment, we look at at the district level, create our strategic plan goals around helping inform long-term curriculum purchase. That's a, a lot of what we see there. Also, we always wanna have some kind of literacy focus, right? That's our, a lot of our assessments in elementary are around literacy, and really dig down to, you know, those five components of literacy and evaluating each one on a regular basis. And then last, but certainly not least, is the limit over testing. And it's kinda why we're here today, is the idea to look at that big picture of testing, and our kids are being tested a lot. We continue to add, and we're looking for opportunities to now start to take away a little without detracting from that data that we need, like I said, to inform instruction and grow our students.
Yeah, and keep in mind, too, when a student is taking an assessment, they are practicing the skills that should be corresponding to their grade level, too, right? It is good for us to engage our students in deliberate academic practice. And an assessment is a good way to see, you know, what is a student able to independently know and able to do for not only the teacher, but also for the student themselves, and to strengthen their skills, so.
One problem I have, though, is most of the testing is, is multiple choice. You know, so you can't always see how they process the information that they have. So I think that that is really one of the flaws that we've gone to in testing. And I understand why. It's a lot easier. You're dealing with discrete things that can easily be identified as being right or wrong. So I, I understand that, but I think that that's a bit of a problem. And then the other thing that occurred to me was, if you don't read well, how do you do well on the math test? You know? And so, one thing is a little bit soft, automatically, you're, you're gonna stumble twice when you get the other thing.
Yeah, so what, first response is, both the MSEP and the PSAT do all have open-ended questions. So it's not all 100% multiple choice. Multiple choice is a component of it, but they do have some open-ended on both of those assessments. And then, for the second part, any of our students who do have a learning disability in reading, a lot of times, they'll do use text-to-speech for the math portion. So it is read to them for exactly what you're trying to get at. We wanna know how their math skills are, not, I couldn't even read the question, how do I assess what my math skills are at?
In addition to that, there are, she also talks a special about other special populations, like our EL students. So now they're taking their MSEP. MSEP is added over the last couple of years. They call them a stack. The accommodation is called stack testing, which they have the ability to learn. And their, their current language is just for mathematics, right? Because we don't wanna assess reading if they can't read. That's a word, that has to be.
So it'd be in Spanish.
Yeah. The math portion would be. So then we're actually testing their mathematic ability, not how to read, how to read English. And a lot of the, you know, we use, when I used to take the standardized tests, you know, the old memes. Unlike now, these tests are adaptive. So even though they're multiple choice, which is an obviously best-case scenario, on NWA, and I think this has been explained before, that when you get a question wrong or right, the test actually adapts. There's no two students in the room taking the same test. Their questions that they get are based on how many right or wrong they get, and continue to challenge them, or continue to go down.
To hit where they are.
To exactly where they're at, in, in many different categories.
Yeah. There's a lot of tests that are staggered that way. But then I also heard, and, and correct me, I mean, I simply haven't taken a third-grade test in a number of years. But they said that they'll read to them, what, in second grade? But they won't necessarily read to them for the third-grade test. Is there a plateau in there?
There is. So in, in NWA, we actually have the, there's a, there's a K2 test, and then a 2-5 test, and then a 6-8 test for NWA. In TCAPS, we decided to start them reading the own test, starting in second grade, and everybody doing the same thing. This is something that we've gone back and forth on, with the, with the idea that we want the same of the data coming through on the same kid, so that we can actually compare apples to apples. Because if you have some buildings decide, well, we want our second graders to hear it. And we have some buildings say, well, we want some of our kids to read it. But in our board meetings, or when we're looking at data for curriculum, or we're trying to support mission-based budget with reading intervention, the scores don't differentiate who's reading it and who's not. So we decided TCAPS, at 2-5, they have to read the test. And that does give us a little more accuracy on where they are with their reading skills more than their listening skills.
2-5?
2-5, they read the test. K1, it's read to 2.
Yeah.
And there'll be some kids, I'm sure.
They struggle, yeah.
They're gonna just hit the wall on that.
They struggle. And so that's, you know, that, that's a tough one, as far as kids who struggle with reading, trying to force through a test, right, and figure out where they land. But it's still data, even, and it's data we use in an IEP. So if they are in the second percentile, obviously, they struggled mightily to read the test, but we still have that data that we need, right, in a PLAF and an IEP to provide services. If we don't have that, and that test is read to them, and they come out in the NWA and reading on the 35th percentile, they might not qualify for the services they need.
And that's why we focus on literacy, early literacy skills with younger students.
Yeah. And it applies, even, we all know that applies across the four core. Right? Without that, you, you don't have that baseline to, you know, to be successful in mathematics, to explore reading and history, etc.
Yeah, there's a lot of upstream thinking with that, right? Teaching kids how to read early, and us monitoring that and making sure they're getting those skills is gonna pay dividends down the road, so.
Yeah. I just, also concerned about kids that basically fail a little bit too early. And, and that is a whole different issue. But you're also concerned about that, 'cause, what is it? Hattie says that one of the greatest predictors of success is confidence that you can do it. So that was a hurt.
Thank you for that background, y'all. Yeah, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Kay just to expand a little bit on this slide here.
Yeah, so Dan mentioned a little bit with regards to when we look kind of at broad research, that need for that balanced assessment system. So what the Michigan Department of Education did was take that research and essentially provide guidance for districts on how to build or ensure that we have components that kind of go across those four main buckets of a balanced assessment system. And it's really under the guise of the need and recognition that there isn't one assessment that's going to be able to provide a full picture of student growth and achievement, and that need to have those multiple data points over the course of a year and beyond, to ensure that we really have the most accurate picture we can of the skills and understanding that students glean over the course of their educational experience. And so what MDE did was essentially provide guidance in, ensuring that districts have identified assessments that fall into these four buckets of a diagnostic assessment, formative assessment, interim benchmark, and then summative. And you'll see kind of going from left to right, they really categorize it more so into leading and lagging indicators. And really, that leading indicator is, those assessments are assessments for learning. So that data is going to be utilized to actually make instructional adjustments and intentional planning with regards to instruction. Where the further we go to the right, we're looking more at those lagging indicators, which is really those assessments of learning. So how are students able to apply and transfer those skills and strategies that have been explicitly taught over the course of the year on more of those summative assessments through PSAT, SAT, MSEP? And then for some of our students, My Access.
Could you just speak a little bit more about the AIMS Web Plus?
Yep.
And how, what unique, you know, testing does it offer compared to NWA and so on?
Yeah, so AIMS Web Plus is, plays quite an integral role, I think, in terms of those early literacy skills we're talking about just previously. So NWA is not going to measure whether or not a student is able to actually accurately identify without listening, accurate letter sounds, accurate letter naming, oral reading fluency, all of those precursor foundational skills that are necessary to actually make meaning when they're reading, which is what we usually see when we're looking at NWEA scores. And so it's that additional layer that says, what are, do our kids have that solid foundation of those foundational skills for accessibility, to actually be able to access the text, to then essentially kind of shift their, their cognitive bandwidth into actually understanding what they're reading? So we utilize, at the elementary level in particular, those skills to actually form more skills-based groups of, if we notice a lagging skill in a student's, some of those precursor foundational skills, we're actually able to better align and target intervention to remediate those skills necessary, so that we are developing those fluent readers.
So, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's a similar concept to Delta Math, right? Well, Delta, well, we have NWA that gives us a large score, and you can go down to a band. Teachers need to go down even further than that, right? To look at the actual skill that the, that the student needs support at, so we can have the precise intervention. So Delta Math is the same thing, is that they get it down to like five different actual standards, a standard of, let's say, two-digit, two-digit addition, right? So we know that we're gonna bring that student in for two weeks, work with that two-digit addition, see that they're proficient in it, and then move on to, to another standard. So it's that kind of, that, that laser focus that really helps. We, we're filling holes, right, as far as where they're at. If there's a whole lot of holes, and they might need more support, that's tier three. But that's what, that's the essence of intervention, right? Is we're looking for where, things that they missed in their education, so we can fill them, so that they're able to build larger concepts on top of those, those standards.
Two questions. One, does that mean that they have fewer quizzes in their classroom because they're tested so much, you know? And secondly, it almost seems like you'd have a fluid grade, you know? So that you have all the second graders that are tested using the same tests. And the kids that need to focus, you could have a couple in Ms. Jones' class, five in Ms. Brown's class, 16 in Ms. Little's class, and you combine all those kids together for a time to do that particular math class, right?
That's correct. Brittany could probably talk to it, and she actually lives in a layer. It's a targeted intervention time, so.
Yeah. So a lot of our district, or a lot of our elementary buildings have set aside common grade-level differentiated blocks. And so essentially, for anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes a day, all third graders have an opportunity to get what they need in terms of either remediating or extending their skills. And so the data sets, particularly with Delta Math and AIMS Web Plus, is it allows us to have more similar skills and needs, because especially on NWA, you might have four kids that are at the same score, but they all have varying needs that are contributing to the results of that score. And so as Dan spoke with Delta Math, and I think it's similar to AIMS Web Plus, those data sets allow us to specifically, and more, and better pinpoint those skills, so that we can form more aligned groupings. To your point of, I can pull two kids from one third-grade class and three kids from another that have the similar need, and I can better align an intervention and provide it during that sacred 30 to 45-minute block of time.
And then, they would get another testing, basically, to see how they, and then that block would fill differently.
Yes. Yep. Yes, yep.
Depending on the testing. So how frequently would that?
So Ames Web Plus is administered three times a year, similar to NWA, so fall, winter, and spring. It's also normed like NWA and nationally normed, so it's a comparison to their peers nationally. Um, and so what's also nice with Ames Web Plus is it, it's not only a benchmarking platform or screening platform. It also has embedded progress monitoring. So you can set individually specific goals for a student based on what their baseline score is. Um, and so that's nice to be able to track progress over time of how our kids actually able to apply and transfer the skills that they're learning in that intervention period. Um, and so usually for the progress monitoring data, that's reviewed once formally in between those benchmark periods. So we have as much fluidity as we possibly can, and we avoid kind of this, um, quote unquote, like life sentence, so to speak. We want to be able to exit kids from intervention as, as quickly as we possibly can, um, just to kind of remediate those skills. To fill those gaps.
And then how, what grades does that, uh, cover? And then how long have we been doing this?
Kindergarten through fifth grade, um, for, um, Ames Web Plus. And I believe Delta Math can be administered kindergarten through fifth, but it's most primarily utilized first through fifth. Because there aren't kindergarten-aligned lessons to the results of that data. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's, kindergarten's correct because they're just in kindergarten, so as far as what they don't know, they don't know type thing. Um, and Ames Web, as far as K five, this is the first year everybody has done it. We've done, um, we've worked with special ed, education students with Ames Web. Um, with, and Ames Web does have a math component, um, that they use Ames Web for, for special education students. This year is the first year we've done everybody K five on Ames Web, um, so more properly see where, where interventions can be placed.
And when she says progress monitoring, keep in mind that doesn't mean that kid is sitting down for, uh, what you think of as a traditional test. A lot of times what that looks like is that they're doing the intervention and, um, it's got really scripted and, and intentional practice. And as students are successful, it like will move that kid on, and you see, okay, we got the dance example, two-digit regrouping addition, right? Second grade standard. Oh, the kid's done it correct, the kid's done it correct. Oh, they've had enough times in which they've, they've done it correctly, they've demonstrated the skill, cool. We're ready to move that kid on. It's not quite as, don't think of it as like I, a kid sits independently and, and does a test. It's more, what does that intentional practice look like? Oh, if I've made a mistake, let's give them another chance and see if they can do it now, practice the skill again. Nope, they're gonna need some more instruction and modeling on that. Now we said, you know, so it's, it's very fluid. Um, it's not, when they, sometimes when you hear progress monitoring, you think, oh, now the kid's going back and taking another test now. It's more of, what does that scripted practice look like? And then as the kid produces success, cool, we can move them out of that. Or they're not successful, or any little bit more direct instruction and modeling on that.
And Ames Web Plus, the progress monitoring measures are intended to be about a minute long. So it's very, very quick.
Okay, and maybe that's why all these little pre-K kids have their computers, so they're getting used to doing this. In preparation of hitting second, first grade, right? And it'll be interesting to see if it makes a big difference in looking at your scores next year. You're looking at progress.
Yes, absolutely, because the intent is that we're able to provide more targeted intervention because we have the data sets we need in front of us to give those groups of students or individual students the best opportunity to remediate those skills in the quickest way possible.
Oh, heck, I need to do it.
So you might be heading this way, Dan, but, um, I'm just curious, you know, who uses the data? When do they use it? How frequently? Because, you know, the backdrop here is, you, y'all are evaluating.
You're leading us right into the rest of our presentation.
Of all these tests against the cost of the burden on the students and the teacher missing instructional time.
Where, when do you share with parents?
Yep, yep, you're, you're, we're gonna talk all about that. Um, so we're gonna start with our recommendations for next year for elementary assessments.
So starting with elementary, this is still a work in progress. So we are looking in this, I wouldn't call this a recommendation quite yet. Um, it's interesting when I started to get into conversations, I wanted feedback from elementary principals. Uh, from our elementary leadership team, from our math leadership team. Um, cause I thought at first, you know, I would, you, you say you're gonna eliminate NWA reading, and there'd be, um, uh, in the winter, right? Everybody would kind of, most people would celebrate and go, hey, less testing, that'd be great. However, I think we have a lot of, a lot of our processes are kind of tied to that, and this is what we've done for several years, we've used NWA. So I'm gonna continue to look at this with teachers. I think we might actually survey all, cause I hear some voices, some want it, some don't. Everybody wants to get rid of M-Step. That's not an option, right? That's one we have to do that everyone wants.
We might lose state funding on that one.
That would be a red flag.
So if he wants to try it, a legislator, I'll talk to him.
That might be interesting, yeah.
So the two that we're gonna continue to look into, and I think I'll come back to board curriculum as far as final approval with this, probably in one of our July meetings, there's two of them there. Is looking at specifically for elementary, just our NWA reading, um, for the winter. And why we're looking at that is that we, we've already mentioned that we're doing Ames Web now with all students. And we feel like that when we have our data meetings, we're gonna have another slide here where we talk about what do we do with the data. That that is, that's significant enough to help us create those intervention groups. And again, we're trying to, as we add testing, we're trying to take some away. Another idea we had, um, was to move all of our fifth grade, instead of doing fifth grade, fall, winter, spring. Is to take our fifth grade and do that during the winter. Fifth grade, right now, takes four M-Step tests. So we've talked about this, I think, in board curriculum or board before. Social studies, science, language arts, math, and that is a taxing time in the spring. And then we add three NWAs to it also, so that's seven, seven tests total. So one of our ideas is that can we take that, that spring, and so there are only tested the losses, we have to do it twice. Uh, it can be fall, winter, it can be fall, spring, and move that in, into the, in the winter. One thing that we haven't touched yet, if you noticed that I haven't talked about winter math, NWA. Just talking to the, the math leadership team, this is the first year that we've had all of our elementaries doing, um, math data meetings. And they wanna kind of continue that momentum. They think eventually that Delta Math might be enough for the winter data meeting. But since they just started, they kind of wanna continue that momentum into next year.
So in some, you're finding right now that NWA, ELA, and the Ames Web are complementary. And then NWA math and Delta Math are complementary. But if the teachers assess that there's too much overlap, it'd be easier to eliminate one or the other.
It would be, and that's, it's, it's tough because, I mean, the, the spring in particular, when I talk about moving the fifth grade as far as what do we use it for, right? That's the, what do we use, cause they're gonna come back in sixth grade and do a fall. We're not gonna eliminate any fall testing. So the spring does, and we also have to look at our evaluation rubric, cause some of this is also tied to that. You know, that, that fall to, to spring testing. So that's what we, we're always constantly weighing, and we wanna get feedback from teachers and elementary principals as what's best for the whole system, including students. What we, the data that we use for intervention, and then again, how do we inform instruction? At what time of the year is it? Is doing all that testing, that's the, the stickler of M-Step, right? You're doing all that testing in the spring. Everybody goes away, it doesn't inform instruction, um, until the following year, or like I said, kind of that big picture idea.
But you don't have any flexibility on M-Step, unfortunately, so with, I mean, moving fifth grade to the winter, is that? Is that because of the idea, well, they're moving on to middle school and, and?
That's just to try to relieve some testing, uh, burnout, because they have four M-Steps that they have to take that we don't have. One thing that Jesse and I are looking into is a little wiggle room, cause we set the window for NWA. And Jesse can explain this a little more, but when you get down to kind of the brass tacks, you have to actually put the number of days of instruction you have between your testing windows, which then filters into, I believe.
Valgrain them for the percentile and the norming, yep.
So as far as moving that window, it, we'd like to ideally maybe move our fifth grade into the later or earlier spring. Maybe move it to March, do a fall, do a March, and then that's it for fifth grade. Uh, that way you do have some similar data. But the, the number one reason with moving that fifth grade out of spring is just test burnout.
So fifth graders have more M-Steps than the other grades?
Third and fourth grade just have ELA and math.
Okay, they add social studies and science. Okay.
But seventh grade has a lot of NWA.
It does, and Jesse's gonna tou- touch upon the secondary plan in middle school and how they're gonna adjust also.
Cause I just asked some kids, three kids, and I said, I said, how do you feel? And they said, we feel like they do way too much testing.
So, just remind us, and also I think it's important for public record. What are parents' rights to opt a kid out of standardized testing?
So there is not necessarily, and sometimes we get that parent communication about opting out. At any point, I mean, K five-wise, secondary is a little different. Um, a teacher, a parent calls me up, they don't want their student to test. I encourage it, right, I, I talk to them about everything we've talked about here, the data's important. We use like every data point we use, but at the end of the day, if they, K five, if they decide not to test, they don't test. As a district, we need a percentage of M-Step for students to test in order, that's connected to.
Ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five percent.
Otherwise, we are, are financially five percent of our state aid.
Why is it M-Step up on there?
Is it in the spring behind?
But it would be under spring.
It would be, yeah.
But yeah, it's a, it's a slippery slope, you know, honestly, that way that we don't have control over, so we strongly encourage everybody.
It's a conversation, right, when we, when we have the parent call, it's like, uh, I don't wanna take M-Step, and I go, okay, and that's it. I mean, we do go into it, and I do mention that there are graduations requirements that are connected to standardized testing as you get into secondary. Uh, building that standard of understanding what they're being tested, and again, making sure that the parent understands what we're using the data for.
So just looking at this slide, M-Step falls under fall and spring, right, but not winter?
M-Step is just spring.
Oh, just spring, okay. And what grades?
Three, four, five.
So if a parent, you know, and, I mean, we've all heard stories of kids who have anxiety about testing. They would be, if, if you're looking to reduce that burden on them, it would be the NWA, the Delta Math, or the Ames Web that you'd steer them towards to help that kid manage the anxiety.
In specific.
If that was really the issue, I think we would actually help them figure out how to get them to complete the test and overcome the anxiety. There, there's a lot of research that when you have that and you, and you don't do it at all, it actually makes it worse. So let's imagine. Figuring out how can we get an environment in which, you know, what's the root cause of that anxiety? And how can we maybe address that and support that, um, and work towards that as opposed to just avoidance?
And testing anxiety, I wouldn't lump in necessarily Ames Web and Delta Math with the other ones. Cause that Ames Web and Delta Math is a very quick assessment, while M-Step, students, I mean, can hunker down for a while. And that takes, and especially if we start talking about tier three, you know, our most vulnerable students in special education. That is, that can take a long time as far as completing those tests, like days.
Does it cost us anything to take the test?
It doesn't cost us anything to do the state assessments that are required. Um, NWA we pay for, but then we, I rewrite a grant every year, and that is covered because it's on the approved list. Ames Web does cost us money to, to administer as a district. Again, we write a grant. I've writ, at least this last year, our grant was approved to pay for that. So we try as much as we can, there's a lot of different funding out there that we go after that's not general fund dollars for that. There is some costs sometimes at secondaries to rent some tables and chairs and that types of things, but those are very minimal costs for that.
Ames Web is seven dollars a student for the whole suite.
And this year we were able to pay for all of that out of a grant fund, so.
That's good.
Do y'all know if, like, what our participation rate is for NWA versus M-Step?
I'd say it's very similar. They're both above ninety-five percent.
Above ninety-five percent.
Yeah, we really haven't been below ninety-five percent, uh, uh, that I can remember. I shouldn't maybe, you know, jinx us. But, um, we really, on a state assessment, you really don't wanna be, you really wanna try hard to work. There are makeup days, um, we work with families if we need to make arrangements or, or figure out what that root cause could be. But that is really important that we hit state compliance, just because then we are in a situation where now we have to direct energy personnel into sort of meeting what happens when you don't hit state compliance and what are the impacts of that. Which we would like to avoid.
So Dan, you mentioned that you're looking at getting input from all the, all teachers by July and coming back with their, with the recommendation.
Yeah, the more, the more I kind of got into it, and got the initial feedback from elementary principals and leadership teams. I just thought it was worth looking a little more into to see what the vast majority, um, thought about not having it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So middle school is, is a little bit cleaner here. Um, I have been working with, uh, actually Ryan Ranger and Kristen Student, and the two leads at our middle schools came to me pretty early on and said, mm, there's a lot of, uh, desire from our staff to eliminate the amount of testing at middle school. And so I said, awesome. And so I've been working with their leadership team, and this has gone through both the leadership teams, the building ARs, and those sort of things um, at the middle school. But, so their first proposal, um, is to eliminate the science of the NWA. So right now, currently, at, um, at our middle school, our students in grades six and seven and eight actually take three NWA tests three times a year. That would be nine tests a year. Um, those tests run one, but usually two school days, um, class periods. So they, and the reason why science is, it's not strongly aligned, aligned to the, um, national science standards, the NGSS standards that we're using. Um, we aren't really using the data for anything. Um, our science department doesn't find it informative or valuable to them. Um, so they were like, can we please not do this anymore? And actually, science is not one of the assessments that's reimbursed through our grant funding either, so. So that's science. Um, the other.
There's just some legacy there, like.
There's a little bit of a legacy, and, and I think too, when we adopted NWA, we first adopted ELA in math pretty early cause we, we liked the national norming, we liked the information it was giving us. Um, and then they pushed out science. It was like a later product, and we thought, well, we like ELA and, and math, why not try science? And we've tried it for a few years, man, Dan, I don't know how long, I mean, five years maybe we've done science. We haven't done it the whole time. Um, and we just haven't found use on it, and we just find the scores don't really correlate too much.
We've moved away from, from elementary also a while back, and now you're looking, I met with Brittany, and I've been meeting with the science team this year. And we're gonna do some common assessments, like quick ten questions, um, to be able to kind of align, uh, how our science is. It just gives us a better idea of moving into the M-Step, where, where we're at.
So that's the first change that, um, they, they made to me. The second recommendation they made is that they wanna get rid of that winter NWA for all of their students. Um, and so their thinking is, um, some of our students at the middle school take exams, depending on what courses they're in. Um, they also change over semesters there, um, and so they were wondering if their, if their second NWA could be right before spring break. I put it in that spring, I could have probably put it in that window, or, or sorry, in the winter, in the winter window, uh, list there. But sort of that idea of, let's do the fall NWA with, uh, ELA and math, and then let's come back and see where kids add are about February, March. Semesters rolled over, we've got some academic, uh, data on this, kids with grades. Um, and it gets them clear for the spring in which those students take the M-Step. Um, so that they're not on top of each other. Right now, they're all in the midst of doing NWA and M-Step. And step is, we can't move it, right? The window is set by the state for us. Um, so that would allow our sixth and seventh grade would take the fall, ELA and math, and, and NWA. Sort of a mid-winter, February, March, NWA. And then they, just sixth and seventh grade, take M-Step in the, in the spring, and they do ELA and math. So it kind of gives us a nice benchmark on that. Our eighth grade, um, they've actually, their recommendation is to remove NWA altogether from our eighth graders. And with our eighth graders, do a fall PSAT, the PSAT eight, nine. It's what our ninth graders, our tenth graders, and our eleventh graders take at the high schools. It's one morning in October, um, that students take that. We get the results back pretty quick. Actually, they come back through, it's all a digital test, um, probably about four weeks from college board. We get a breakdown of where students are at. We also get sample questions in each of the score bands, so we're able to use those instructionally and set goals. And then they would take that same, same assessment in the spring. That assessment, uh, PSAT eight assesses, uh, ELA and math. That sort of leads them up to the series of the P S A T nine, the P S A T ten, and then ultimately the S A Ts juniors. Our eighth grade's really just wanna use some of the systems our high schools have to prepare them for that. The eighth grade is the only one that then has the additional M step for science and social studies. So M step for, uh, our s- our sixth and seventh is E L A in math. For our eighth graders, they, the P S A T is the required for E L A in math, and then they have M step for science and M step for social studies. Our eighth graders do four days, like our fifth graders, of testing every spring.
But they do, the eighth graders also, they do take the E L A in math as well?
They take the E L A in math as the P S A T, not as the M step. So the state says, we want you to take a, a state assessment in all four areas, but instead of taking the M step for E L A in math, they take the P S A T. That's what the state assessment is for those kids. But there's not a state assessment on the P S A T suite for science and social studies, so they take those separate tests through the M step platform.
And we used to take the M step.
Not for E L A, well, when they, when they changed to the P S A T eight. Yes, yeah, a couple of years ago, they pushed the P S A T. It's similar, so as an eleventh grader, which is the next slide, but there's no change there. They take the S A T, which hits you E L A in math, and then they take M step, science and social studies, right? It's those, it's, it's the fifth grade year, the eighth grade year, and the eleventh grade year that they take a state assessment in all four of those core areas.
So I wanted to make sure I understood, regarding P S A T eight in October, that's what you wanna move to, or that is?
That's what we wanna move to. So that would be new, that P S A T eight in October would be new. Right now, what our eighth graders did is they took the N W A in the fall. Um, and then in the spring, they took the N W, they're taking the N W A again, and they're taking the P S A T eight. So what they're recommending is no N W A in the spring for the eighth graders, and no, they're actually recommending no N W A period for eighth grade. Move them off of that when they get to be eighth graders.
You guys are using this slide to show changes, so it looks like for fall N W E A, six and seven only is green, should be green to show that change, right? And then P S A T eight, October.
Green, yeah, I can do that, yeah.
Okay, and then going forward, cause I know P S A T eight did happen this year in April, that would be scratched going forward, or would that be the second time?
That would be the second time, right? So right now, yeah, our, like, our ninth and our tenth and our eleventh graders just take those state assessments two times a year. Our eighth graders would model that exact same model. They would take it in the fall, and they would take it in the spring. The spring is the required one. We are doing it in the fall to benchmark our kids. It's the recommended one. It is really nice because what we're able to do with our teachers is we do, over the summer, we can give them the data. We organize it by your students that you had in class, how many students were below their benchmarks and grew, and what does that growth look like? How many were above and grew, and what does that look like? And we actually start the year in August with them kind of reflecting on their students from the last year. How did they do, and what types of instructional, um, information does that tell them? They love it. They actually love seeing that kind of a, a fall and a spring on the same exact assessment. On the same, you know, like, they can really see that growth with kids, so.
Thank you.
Going into the next grade.
They are, they are looking in reverse because we get those scores in June, right? Our kids all took it. But they'll get, our, our kids will all get their S A T, P S A T scores probably tomorrow or Thursday. They usually get them right around May first. But we, as a school, don't get them until June. Cause it's a, it's a state accountability thing. We, right now, we're screening our window for, should these students be attached to us, us for accountability? But kids actually get their scores back this week, so.
Did you wanna talk at all about WEDO or?
Not really. There's no changes there. We're required to give WEDO screeners, uh, to all of our students who, um, enter in the fall. And then our, the major WEDO assessment is a winter window, which is actually nice cause it stays off of the state assessment window in the spring, so.
Do you feel that you get much information that's really usable from M step? Given all the other testing?
Oh, I don't, that's a tricky question, Beth. I, I am a numbers gal, and so, um, I, I don't mind a little bit of a broad stroke every year as to how do kids perform. I think it helps us say, are the things we're doing along the way making an impact and making a difference? Um, I don't necessarily, I'm not married to the M step, and I, I wish, I can see the scores right now. I've been kind of like collecting them, but I can't show them to anyone. I can't do anything with them. We can't talk to teachers about them, so.
So I just wonder if you could save enough money at the state level and actually bring it back into the schools as discretionary money to use to help augment some of the areas where kids are struggling.
We had a state superintendent who strongly believed in bringing N W A and making that our state assessment. Unfortunately, he passed away during this term of cancer, and it kinda died with him. And so there is some, there is some legislation that's been introduced this session to relook at a balanced assessment system such as N W A, but we'll see where it goes.
Is it in the House or is it in the Senate?
I believe it's in the House.
Do the, do the advocacy organizations, M E S B, M E S A, M E A, have ta- have they taken positions on this?
Um, I think, I think that they agree with it. I think M D E has come out against it. Um, and, you know, so.
It's political.
It's, it's also territorial and self-preserving. And, and, and you know, there is some, there's some argument there. I mean, to, to give the other side is, you know, it's a state aligned test to our state standards, and, and W A is a national product. You know, so there, there is some variance there, um, but, you know, I think we could get down to a course that is standards that could be identified. I think there's a way to do it if there's the will, but right now, there hasn't been the will.
And it's nice that N W A, P S A T are nationally normed. We have a national, and we've talked about in our last study session. About having it nationally normed and not just comparing to state, and it's our, M step is not. There's no way, I don't believe there's any way to take our M step data and compare it nationally.
There are some funky calculation things that they do. Harvard just did one not that long ago, but it is a very complicated, you know, the psychometricians run, the, you know, professional PhDs and do that.
You have to have enough data historically on all those assessments to, to make those predictions, so like, there's a little bit of like, anyways. Um, but I will say this, so if, if we're okay and supportive with this, we will have eliminated three days of science, um, testing from the calendar. We've eliminated in the, for our eighth graders, instead of having two days in the fall, they'll have one. There's another day we've eliminated, and then we've eliminated, um, two more days in the winter. So we've really gone, we've eliminated six days or more, if you're, um, a student with accommodations who takes time and a half or double time on assessment of testing for, we're getting back a whole week's worth of instruction.
And absences. I mean, how many, how forward do you go with tier one instruction in the class if six kids haven't taken it? So you make up far more than that, I think, to, to disruption in the middle school. This guy lived it the last couple of years. It's disrupting.
Well then, how do you explain all this to the parents? This is how your child did on this test, but this is how they did on this test, and then on this test, they did this. But that was done in the winter, and this was done in the spring, and this was done in the fall. Now, do you understand exactly how your child is doing in school? And you wanna come back to parent-teacher night, the next time we have them?
Yeah, it's tough.
Um, no change recommended for high schoolers. Um, we feel pretty solid about what we have. I know that spring looks like a long list, uh, all-state required. It really is. Our, our ninth and tenth graders have two days. They do a fall test, they do a spring test. Our eleventh graders are the ones who have a little bit more. They do that one day in the fall, and then in the spring, they have one day for the S A T. And then it typically is a half a day for them to do their M step, which is their science and social studies. And then it's a half a day for them to do their work keys. I will tell you, we have worked really hard, uh, both Joe Esper and myself at the, at the M A S S P to try to get work keys moved. Uh, very, lots of great principal support around getting work keys eliminated. Almost got through the Senate one year.
What's work keys?
Um, it is assessment designed to test whether a student is career, um, ready, um, to enter the workforce. They actually, it's a great assessment for some of our, our students who go to C T C, and C T C does administer it a multiple times to show growth on those. Um, it just is an assessment that we use widely. Um, any of our kids who are, um, going to two and four-year institutes, they don't do anything with it, nor they, do they do anything with the M step at science and social studies, but.
And is it work keys, is it looking at, do you have skills? Or do you have interests, or does it look at both?
No, it's skills, and it's more of what you would consider traditional reading, writing, and math skills.
And it's a difference in A C T product, and we transitioned to an S A T state. So that's another interesting.
So, the last slide we have too, is the most important that Josie were asking, so like, we gotta use the data for something, right? It's gotta be meaningful to our kids, meaningful to our teachers, meaningful to us, taking resource allocation decisions, professional development decisions, all of those. So we listed a few here, um, Dan and Brittany, I don't know if you guys wanna talk a little bit?
Yeah, school level is first and foremost, is that, that fall screening as well as N W A's placement and interventions, and how that goes hand in hand, mission-based budget, uh, tier-two support. So that's our, our, our number one. We have a formalized, um, data meetings that we do, fall, winter. Uh, some schools do spring, we spring a little more optional, where our coach, um, administration and a grade level will sit down, look at the data, not only tier-two, but also their tier-one data. Cause sometimes looking at the tier-one data can help the entire grade level. Look at what they need to address, or something that possibly was missed in a previous year, especially with our move over to C K L A. Cause we, we're seeing now where those, maybe some holes were, and they're consistent, um, struggles and learning that they had with reading, and how we can, we can fill those, not only again with intervention, but we really emphasize this year, the idea of using it as, as tier-one also. Again, always informing instruction, um, and then individual student group also.
I was just gonna say, that informing instruction, just to add a little bit more to what Dan spoke of in tier-one, um, with our tier-one data reviews. Our grade-level teams, our instructional coach and our building leaders really utilize their data review, uh, times that generally occur after the benchmark window is closed, um, to really del- delve into kind of the causal factors contributing to the results of the data, and then they develop theories of action, um, of hey, we're gonna focus our time and energy on leveraging and focusing in and doing our due diligence on X, Y, and Z instructional strategy. And then instructional coaches really play an integral role in monitoring that throughout the course of that benchmark window, making some adjustments and refinements before then that N W E A gets re-administered, um, in the winter and then in, in the spring to kind of close it out.
Can you very, um, clearly define tier-one, tier-two, tier-three?
Yeah, so when we talk about tiered, they're really systems and supports, right? So we tend to avoid calling students, you know, they're tier-one students or they're tier-two students. It's about the adult moves and the support systems that are provided. Um, and so tier-one is all students. So what are the supports, instructional programming assessments that all of, um, our students within tier-one receive?
And then needs go into tier-two, and then more needs.
Yes, and so really, we want to generally target, tier-one is usually, um, like, we strive for, you know, eighty percent. So if we just focus our time and energy on our tier-one supports and creating systems around that, we wanna see eighty percent, at least at minimum, responding positively to those supports we put in place. Tier-two tends to be around ten to fifteen, and then tier-three supports tend to be around five to ten. Um, and that research is pretty consistent in terms of what we really wanna see in terms of those systems and structures that target those tiers.
When you're in, if, if you see tier-three get too large, what that really tells you is you have a tier-one problem, right? What you're doing for all students is, is not comprehensive enough, um, and they're not responding, right?
And generally speaking, tier-three is, the students that are participating in tier-three are, they have an I A P.
I just had a comment about, we also monitor student individual growth, but do we also, I'm looking at the buildings improvement plans at twenty-four, twenty-five. The buildings also, um, monitor building growth, correct? So there would be a number four potentially, that I think ties into district level and what we're trying to accomplish as a district. Like, I'm looking at Easterns right now, like, they had a goal of ninety percent, uh, above sixty percent N W A reading. And then in June, ninety percent, ninety percent, you know, so anyways, I just think it's, you know, I, I just came across this document, this, these building plans, and it's pretty, uh, it's pretty, I think, cool that they're, they're establishing targets and all this intervention and wonderful things, assessments to make sure that not only individuals are hitting their targets, but the buildings are as well.
And at the secondary, I'll add on that we monitor courses, right? So students who, for example, are in Algebra I, are they making the growth that we would expect them to? If not, gosh, is there a curricular issue? Do we need some more professional development? What kind of support do we need? We also monitor teachers too, right? There are certain teachers in our building, or in our district, who are more successful with getting growth out of students in certain, um, ranges, and so then we look at like, what are they doing, and what types of tools are they using? And how can we work together and work smarter? We look at that too. Or it might be like, hey, this person's really struggling. What additional resources might they need for us to support them and support their kids too? So we look at those layers too.
District level will also monitor curriculum and programming. I mean, with our interventions that we use, we continue to use an intervention, and it doesn't work. We, we can move to another intervention or switch. What we're trying to do is move more to a, a like intervention at every elementary school so everyone has the same experience, but with curriculum especially, I mean, we're using C K L A based on. I mean, if our rating data is knocking out of the park, why would we switch our curriculum?
Would that not fall under the budgeting and allocations, the looking at curriculum and programming?
Um, I, I always think that under the district level, when I think of budgeting and allocation, some of that comes into the at-risk funding, the idea that all students that fall under the sixtieth percentile label at-risk and therefore are budgeted along with A.
Yeah, and I think like at the middle schools, we've really identified that there's not additional tier-two support for reading and math for our sixth-grade students, right? And so Kristen and Ryan and I said, it's, it's gotta be a must. We have to have it in place. So we took it off of our at-risk district funding to build in some time in the day where we didn't, um, we didn't track these kids forever. We have a fluid program we're gonna start next year for sixth graders, so they need a little additional support above and beyond their, um, current schedule for that. We did that before we then made allocations for some of that because we thought that that was important for us to have as a district level for all of our sixth graders next year.
So if kids are feeling, for whatever reason, then they begin to automatically be considered tier-two?
Yep, yep. We're building it in a model that where kids are able to, I, I, Brittany said this beautifully, we don't want this support. We don't want it to label them. We don't want this to be a death sentence of now I'm stuck in this group. Um, sometimes everybody needs a little bit of help at different times, at different places, and in different ways, and that's okay. We all kinda need that, right? So how do we provide that and then get the kid on their way?
And, and every building, whether it's elementary, sometimes we'll call it tasks, teachers addressing student concerns, or M T S S, multi-tiered support systems, have those groups that continually monitor these students who are on, i- in this tier-two support. So we don't place them in tier-two in the fall, and then in the spring, we see how you're doing. It's a regular basis. We meet monthly as a task team in elementary, um, to see wha- how, are they responding to intervention? What other supports do they need? And this not only is, we, we've talked specifically here about, you know, the academic side of it, but social work is the same idea, where we also have as far as social work, oh, there's tier-one, two, and three support systems also, where the whole class is getting social, emotional learning. Tier-two might be a lo- a more one-on-one without an I A P. But then there's specific social workers supplied by our North Ed services that help with students that have social work goals in their I A P. So it's just another thing that we look at alongside academics.
Before we hop into here, I just, if we go back, I just wanted to make a comment about, on the district level, and, and, uh, you know, I shared this with some of you earlier, but I, I hope that, um, we can bring some of this conversation uh, to our board meeting on the twelfth, and to just, I think, bring a little bit of teaching and learning, um, to our strategic plan, um, specifically around assessments. I, I sometime, I'm new, but I sometimes feel like teaching and learning doesn't get a lot of play, uh, during our, I'm just looking at our agenda for the twelfth, and so if there's an opportunity to just share a little bit about these assessments specifically around the goals at the billing level, the goals at the district level, you know, how we allocate dollars affects not just, uh, strategic district goals, but also building goals. So I, I, you know, I just, I, I guess I'd like to have a little bit of, um, you know, there's important discussion. Um, so I, I, you know, I just, I, I guess I'd like to have a little bit of, um, you know, there's important discussions happening here. And I feel like it would do a service for a lot of us to have them on, have them full board meeting as well.
Building grade and subject level growth, I heard you say under school level and at the district level.
Yeah, the tricky and, and I know how Dr. Ian Wagner feels, but as far as, uh, the tricky thing and something that we don't really include in our reporting. Is the idea of grade level and building, building in my mind is a little tricky as far as looking at, we look at building growth. But we actually wanna see grade level growth as far as when we look at district, when we look at like strategic planning or data. I mean, I think it's obviously, it's a bonus to celebrate building growth. But in theory, if we're doing things right as a district, right, with those grade levels, you know, should be growing at, 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 at an adequate pace for all of them. And if, if we're starting to celebrate buildings and s- at some part in there, you, you, you can kind of branch into some unhealthy competition. And we're promoting building, promoting building, that's what we do like to look at. When we, when we did our study session on data, we didn't actually talk much about any particular building, we're really focused on grade level.
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about buildings either, but I do wanna ask, like, are we providing the support that the buildings need to accomplish some of their goals around achievement and growth? You know, and I guess I, I would love to like hear from some of these principals, like at the end of June twenty-twenty-five. Did we accomplish some of these goals we set out to do or, or not? And how do we adjust, you know, from a board level, from an allocation and, you know, accountability standpoint? So if there's a place for it on the twelfth, it'd be great, um, you know, I, I did make that request earlier, but, um, I feel like, I think this is important conversations.
So this year for secondary principals, we did our, we did our mission-based budgeting meeting together. And we really started it by, we thought about what are the barriers they get in the way with students growing and achieving at the level they should. And I made them like, we all thought about it and then we listed it and then we thought every time we're making decisions and allocating resources, are we making them? To try to eliminate these barriers for our kids, right? And as a group, um, and it was, I thought it was, it was a long meeting, but I thought it was really well done because we worked more as a team of building leaders to think about. Wait, nope, we said tier two at middle school is really important, so then we have to make sure we have those at-risk dollars there, right? And even the high school principals were like, okay, we gotta give a little bit because we got an at-risk cut and now we gotta take something off of ours to make sure that's there. But we understand the importance of that and these are kids that are gonna come to us and we're hoping, right? And so for all of us to be in the room and making those commitments together, I, I thought was really helpful for us.
And I think like tier two in the middle school is important, right? And that's, I guess from my seat, that's what I'd like to hear as well, right? Early literacy, the focus on early literacy is important, you know, so as we talk about goals, like last night, I feel like. I just hope there's more around teaching and learning in this Compass two point O. Um, and I think if we just have another quick discussion to just provide some guidance on some of those goals, I think it would be in our best interest.
So I was thinking about that, so I do wonder, you know, I, I, I thought the same thing last night. And I do wonder if it's more proper to have that conversation in the first hour of our next strategic planning. Like have Jesse and Dan lead that and go through that conversation, like of their thoughts of recommendations that were given to the board, all of that. So the board has that right then and fresh and then go from there. You know, just it's.
Yeah, I guess it depends on how packed the twelfth, is it the twelfth meeting is, but right now there's not a lot on discussion. And I think just like we gave a lot of time, I think to our infrastructure facilities, I'd like to give equal time to teaching and learning. Um, and I'd also like to do it in public, you know, I, 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 I'd like the public to attend and I'd like to have these discussions in public. There wasn't, there was nobody in the, from the public, maybe one person last night. I mean, to hear our discussion last night and it's an important discussion.
And I felt actually, cause we were, Nick's point was, we were looking at the data that had come in. As opposed to saying, this is what we want the data to say and where's the support for it. Um, and I, I agree with them, otherwise what's the point of doing the surveys or the, the, uh, focus groups?
Follow the data, right? And I think this is some data, I mean, we're talking about it right now, using the data, so if we're going to follow the data. Um, perceptions surveys are wonderful, right? A point of data, this is another point of data, and I think, I just wanna just talk a little bit more about teaching and learning, that's all.
I'll just say this about this, the study, um, sessions on our strategic plan, those are open to the public. They're not televised, they're not recorded, but that's a limitation of the facilities.
But I believe the North Ed board meetings are video. Uh, well, I found something online that says otherwise, but yes, but anyways.
There's a pilot YouTuber out there, maybe?
I'm just saying, uh, I, 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 I'd like to do it, um, here on the sixteenth of June. If we can't have the, a quick discussion providing guidance around goals on the twelfth. And I'm just one person, but that's my recommendation.
One thing I will just say, um, I think when, you know, Tammy Brunton sent out a query whether we could meet on the. June sixteenth instead of the twenty-third. If we could make it five to eight instead of six to eight.
That was the plan.
Yeah, okay, I thought it was five.
Oh, she did, no, okay, we'll fix that. No, it was, the thought was, we talked about it last night about five to eight.
You know, otherwise it maximizes the probability. All right, sounds good. Um, yeah, I mean, I agree with Ty if the agenda, um, uh, for our next full board meeting is light. And we could afford the time to delve into some of this, great, you know, we could always add it. I mean, you guys already have executive committee meeting in two days, you can, you can consider that. If it's already a packed meeting.
I, I just, I need to give a staff, like a timing and what they all have and like, you know, just kinda quick, you know, from that standpoint. Um, where, you know, we could even do it, you know, in the June meeting, I just would like the board, like I sat there last night and thought. Okay, yeah, this is a good set of data, but I could hear from the board, we'd like to see at least, you know, an explanation of their recommendations. Kinda where that came from, you know, from that standpoint for goals for that. And I, and I thought like that first hour would be good for them to go through that and then continue on. You know, cause I felt like last night, I think we used the data, then all of a sudden became a little bit, okay, what do people think outside of that? You know, and it was like, okay, those are presumptions, but what's backing that up? And so I think they've taken some time to try and get their thoughts of backing that up, but I think it'd be the board, good for the board to hear those and go. Okay, talk about that and maybe the board says, yeah, there are two, three, four there that we'd like to put up on the board to be considered, you know, strongly.
I think, I mean, Jesse and I are prepared to kinda, I feel like we need to close the loop a little bit on the study session we did about. You know, the idea of closing the achievement gap and having specific metrics that tied to some of our strategic plan. I mean, we, we've talked about that quite a bit, so we're there, so anytime you need us to share as far as what that looks like, like Dr. Ian Wagner suggested, we could, we could do that.
Yeah, cause I, I was thinking the material that you sent out. That there's some discussion areas in there, you know, um. And, and obviously putting it out there in the public domain sooner, sooner than later and getting, you know, giving the public.
If North Ed has, I will ask, like, this is the first I've ever seen that they've had anything, you know, televised, so if they can do it.
Not a big deal, but I, I do, I think it's, I think it's a very, very important discussion, very important.
Okay, great, well, thank you, everybody. And I just had one, sorry, one quick thing about state accountability, coming from the government accountability offices I have. Does our Michigan Department of Education have any kind of audit or evaluation function, like an inspector general, auditor general? Where they could ever assess the effectiveness of M-Step?
Only, only, the only capability there within state government is from the auditor general. Um, and they look at certain things, but generally not. It's, it's generally much more financial. And then all of our state, uh, you know, the audit is all financial and all of our comprehensive, like our, our state and federal programs is all financial. There are, there are no.
There's no internal valuation.
Correct, and there are no curriculum police, there are no, you know, and, and it's a shame, the only thing there used to be at one point. Is there used to be, um, a lot of districts were north central accreditation. And they would come in and there would be a team at least come in and evaluate for three days. And would look and kind of, and give recommendations with that, but that was removed probably about ten years ago.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Celebrate.
Our role, yes, our favorite.
Okay, uh, this is the first one from spring break. So we had some of our, uh, West students travel to Japan during spring break, pretty cool, it was a great trip. I heard, uh, great things from, from that, so.
You missed last week at Rotary, but there was a, did you know we have a sister city in Japan?
With the Travers, I.
Is that where these guys went?
No, it's not, and I didn't even know we had a sister city over there, all I could think to myself, yes, I, I saw that.
What's the city?
I don't, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, but they like really have stuff from Traverse City all over. No, they were not in the same spot, I did double check that, um, but pretty cool trip for, for our students. Uh, I don't know the number offhand, it was not a large group, there were only two advisors that went, so I would say probably in the low teens.
It was Amy Cole.
Amy Cole went and, um, I don't remember off the top of my head who went with her, but she's done international trips before, she's phenomenal, phenomenal, yeah.
Well, thanks to those teacher shepherds too, for their willingness to put themselves out there like that.
Central grade school had a great book giveaway, so lots of books that were donated to their library. Uh, had kids come in, take books, take them home and keep them, uh, shout out to Mrs. Schrock, librarian, and then her son Oliver also helped.
Same smile.
Um, and then this is our business class over at Central High School, they sell, um, those goodie baskets. We've, we've, I know the board has supported that before, um, and they were interviewed on the local news about their business. They, it's a how to start a business, they develop the product, they do all the marketing and all that stuff, and then they go out and sell it. And so they were interviewed about that experience.
Some instructional rounds, uh, over at Willow Hill, so Willow Hill did, uh, internal rounds with, with their own staff, looking at. Um, a different problem of practice around, um, explicit instruction. I found it interesting, I think I mentioned this last night, even during our study session, the idea of professional development. And how collaboration included in professional development, I think staff will, will find it more valuable. Be interesting to look three years from now to see if our, that question specifically around meaningful PD. If we have an impact on it based on our, our new PLC instructional round process.
And then I know we've shown some photos of this, but our new innovation center, today we actually had a group of educators from Manawha. Um, down, down near Kalamazoo School up in town visiting, they really wanted to hear about, uh, they were over at West visiting the Innovation Center, seeing some of the classes over there. They started the morning though at Central to see the Thai program and how we did some integration, um, in our, in our core areas there. So those, that's a picture of our West students there in the center.
Got our Traverse Heights Vocabulary Parade, I'm not sure if that's, uh, Mr. Cade in a bird outfit, looks a little tall. I'm gonna go with Dave Kenny, Dave Kenny probably get into old bird outfit, but Vocabulary Parade, very popular, we've done these. I remember the, the kids used to go through the hallways at West Woods also.
Another fun day at our secondaries, I, I'm sorry. I got nothing, oh, here we go, um, this is our AP Gov students, I know Tac Ready does, uh, a day similar over on the west side of town. This is Paige Paul at Central High School, she organizes a mock congress, it's really cool, the kids get to debate different bills that they feel passionate about either side of the bills. The students all act as either house members or senate members, the older students, um, sit on that panel up there, there's a governor, um, it's all student run. The day is super cool, if you guys have never seen it, let me know, we do it once a year at AP Gov, but we can get you guys on the docket to visit. Um, this is a really cool day, the kids get dressed up, they get pretty passionate about the bills that they are presenting on to, so.
I would love that, but yeah. Especially since my son won't be in that class next year.
We'll put it down on our calendar and we'll let you guys know, yeah.
Cherry Knoll, our first school to participate, they've, um, started the DARE program again. A couple of our other schools in North Ed participated and Cherry Knoll is our, our first to participate. I'm gonna read this off here, uh, DARE stands for Drug Abuse Resistant Education. Deputy McKenzie, she works with our schools, I think he said, I worked with her quite a bit at East Middle. Uh, taught the students about risk and consequences, stress, communication styles, bullying, alcohol, tobacco, resistance strategies, vapings. Their decision makings and help network. Several other sheriff and, uh, law enforcement attended. And then t- uh, students during the presentation kinda shared what they learned, um, in small groups. So kind of a real positive experience, every fifth grader, uh, participated over at Cherry Knoll. So we're gonna look to maybe, uh, expand this out to other elementary schools.
This is the first elementary school then, it's.
Well, but it's actually a completely redesigned program. Yep, completely redesigned program and so, um, Sheriff Mike Shag gave me a call and said that he had a deputy that was just trained in it. That they had hired, but, and, and asked if, um, in East Bay Township, if we had a building and I said Cherry Knoll is right there. And so he asked if we could do a pilot, and so this was our first one to pilot.
That's good.
We're gonna follow up, I have a chance to talk to him and once the school's over here, we'll, I think, get together and talk about if there's some ability to expand.
Well, Josie and I this morning were in the, the English project class review.
At Central.
Yes, and of the four students that I had in my group, two of them were dealing with drugs.
Um, this was at our middle schools, they did a career day, this was right before spring break. Um, they hosted a career day where they brought in, uh, different, uh, local, uh, professionals to highlight what their careers are. And give some, they had students cycle through different things, um, and one of the most popular ones, you can see that photo, was the Coast Guard landing a helicopter there at West Middle School. So it was pretty cool for the kids to see.
Do, uh, therapy doc here, Chaplain will be spending some time at Court Tate, handler is Jessica Owen and also will be at Silver Lake.
And then this is a really cool, uh, award that Carrie Labonte, West Senior High Teacher, um, won from the US, uh, Department of State. It's recognizing the relationships that she has formed with her sister school in Germany. So, um, we send kids there, or they take a trip over there every other year. And then the students from the other school come with us and stay with, um, our families here, um, the opposite years, uh, for a couple of weeks. And so she received this, a nice letter in the mail from the US Department of State, just recognizing her commitment, she's done this for quite a few years. Um, in having this partnership with the schools and I mean, a lot of kids that she's been able to expose to that culture. And not only through trips there, but also hosting the kids who come here, so really kudos to her for that above and beyond, um, commitment.
And we've noticed here in the hallways, our K-12 art department hosted the open reception here at Glen Loomis on April tenth. Uh, showcasing the incredible art, incredible artistic talents of our K-12 students, refreshments were donated by Oriana Mimic and, Mimic Harbit Agency. And Tom's Food Market, special thanks to all the art teachers setting up the show. Uh, art show is open to the public through the twenty-fifth, so that is closed. Um, we're, we're in the process now of moving some of the artwork back to the buildings.
And this one was interesting, so one of the databases that we subscribe to allows our students to access, uh, different, uh, research articles. Um, and then they kinda pull data and find out how often are kids actually accessing that, those databases. Gail's the database that both Genevieve Minor and Larissa Vanderzee really want our students to have exposure to. Lots of different peer-reviewed articles, uh, high-level research, it costs money for us to have this, um, subscription and access for our kids. Um, and they pulled the data and they sent us, uh, they sent Joe and, and Ben an email telling us that we are the second most used. Um, public school in Michigan in the database, so it really shows that our kids are reading relevant research articles. Um, and their knowledge of, uh, media literacy, and I know Genevieve and Larissa work really hard, um, with all of our ELA courses at both of our high schools to expose kids to this. And so I thought it was pretty cool for you guys to know that they have this level of access and that they're really using it quite frequently, so.
I know Gail has been around forever, but is this new, relatively new to TCAPs?
No, we have used, it's called the Gail Reference Media, um, Source, and that representative just reached out to us. And said that we were ranked number two behind the International Academy in Bloomfield, um, which was ranked number one in the state as to access points. Um, and this source helps our kids with the digital, uh, literacy media, college readiness, research skills. Um, and they, uh, she thought it was pretty cool, so she reached out and sent it to us, and so I was like, oh, I should know about this too, so.
Yeah, and like Beth said, we just went to the Central High Schools', um, senior ELA classes. Projects and, you know, they have to do a lot of research to prepare a paper and then a one pager, like a flyer. So, I, I mean, I, the, the sources were really good, incredible, so I wonder if, if, you know, that also.
Larissa and Genevieve have a big role in like, ensuring that our kids have access to, to really good research, peer-reviewed, all that stuff. Like you can't, I mean, Google gives you a lot, right? But it doesn't give you access to those scholarly articles and stuff, so.
Or occasionally one will slip in, but you have to recognize it for what it is. Or occasionally one will slip in, but you have to recognize it for what it is.
And, and the value of it, yes.
Okay, any other items? All right, then our next board curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, that's the day after Memorial Day, um, at eight thirty A.M. here at the administration at Glen Loomis Building. And with that, we are adjourned.